Alright, it is 6:03. We will convene the open session of tonight's El Segundo City Council meeting. We will start off with an invocation by our own Pastor Rob McKenna from the Bridge, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilmember Jeru. If you all please rise.
Let's pray. Father God, I'm filled with just a sense of joy this week in the midst of the Holy Week. But Lord, so thankful for this city and for our leaders. Lord God, what a great opportunity it is to be able to come before you tonight. Lord God, and to pray over our mayor, our city council, the administration. Lord God, thank you, Lord, for giving them wisdom and insight. Lord God, that you would give them discernment in their decision-making. Lord, you tell us to pray for our leaders. And Lord, tonight as we do that, Lord, we're thankful that you watch over our city and you protect it. Lord, that you come alongside those that are hurting, that are in need. And Lord God, thankful tonight for our families. Thankful tonight to see all these kids in here, Lord God, celebrating a big victory. And so, Lord, we pray for our families in El Segundo. We pray that you cover these parents, moms, and dads, Lord God. We pray that you lead them and guide them in all that they do. Lord, thank you for the safety over our schools. Thank you for watching over our kids in each of our schools, Lord God, watching over our teachers and administrators. And Lord, I give thanks tonight for our first responders, for our police officers or firefighters, Lord God. Thank you for those that keep our city looking good, Lord God, maintaining it in all that they do. And so, Lord, we are a blessed community. And Lord, we want to make sure that we keep you in the center of all that we do. So, Lord, tonight, as this meeting goes forward, Lord God, thank you that you were in the midst of it. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor McKenna, as always, and thank you Councilmember Jeru. We have four special presentations today. It's very exciting. First off-
May I call roll?
Pardon, you may not. It's not on my list.
Okay. I think it should be.
No, it's just the first thing. Alright, now that we're called to order, let's call the roll before we do the special presentation.
Let's do that.
This was only a test.
Councilmember Keldorf.
Here.
Councilmember Jeru.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baldino.
Here.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Here.
Thank you.
It's like an Anchorman moment. He'll read whatever's on the script. Alright, AYSO Region 92 Boys 10-U Premier All-Stars. Take us away former coach and the last one to lose sportsmanship points, Councilmember Boyle.
Oh man, that was an unfortunate event. No, I'm just kidding. Alright, congratulations to the AYSO Region 92 Boys 10-U Premier All-Stars. By the way, guys, great job in the Pledge of Allegiance. That was really awesome. You guys did an amazing job. You guys captured the Western State Championship title. That is a huge accomplishment. Really proud of you. Thank you for being here tonight. Your teamwork skill and passion for the game have brought you this well-deserved victory. Keep up the hard work and continue to inspire on and off the field. What an amazing job to the boys, the parents, because I know parents are super involved with AYSO, getting your ref points out there so the kids can qualify, all that fun stuff. And it wouldn't be possible without head coach Jordan Stewart, as well as assistant coach Gregory Boger. And Jordan, aren't you also the commissioner as well?
Not quite.
Not quite. Work in progress. I got that one wrong, sorry. No, you don't want that job. So, I'd like to acknowledge the boys and then we'll do a photo op up here. And if the parents want to take pictures, that's great. Ryder Osborne, awesome. Kelly Crouch, awesome. Congrats. Connor Stewart. Raylan Fennell, Fennell? William Boger. Abraham Grubbs. Riker Frank. Cameron Phillips. And Weston Keelman. Alright. Alright, parents, we're gonna do a photo book. Coach, you want to say a few words to your kids and the parents? Yeah?
Thank you guys for having us and for having the boys and recognizing their amazing accomplishment. They've heard me talk so much. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna drag this out and get them out of your hair. But I don't think they quite realize how big of an accomplishment that they have actually achieved. And I was here, I'm super fortunate, I was here last year with an older girls team. It took us five, six years to get it done. And so, last year, I kinda had this like feeling of relief that we'd finally gotten it done. These guys got it done in their second, second go around. So, I don't think they realize quite how much they've achieved and the fact that we have four more years to go. We beat the defending Western State Champions four times, right? That's the plan, right? So, I want them to know, they know already, but I want them to know how much I appreciate them, how much they've achieved. And I appreciate you guys for recognizing them and giving them this opportunity. Thank you.
And then, parents, if you want to come up, also, if parents want to come up, just to take a photo of your children?
Alright, thank you guys. Congratulations. They don't want to hear about the trash rates?
Yeah.
Weird. The halftime speech was all about sanitation rates. Alright, Mayor Protem Baldino, you get Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Alright, whereas, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed nationwide throughout the month of May in recognition of the positive influence and numerous contributions of our Asian American Pacific Islander communities to our state and our country. And whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islanders visit, work, and live in El Segundo and have contributed to our city's rich history, culture, economy, and public service. And whereas, we are reminded that we must celebrate our diversity and our differences as they make us richer community, as we celebrate the importance of inclusion to building a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive future for El Segundo. And whereas, we recognize and confront racism and hate of all kinds against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and recognize the structural discrimination prejudice and injustice experienced by the AAPI community and the increased levels of harassment, discrimination, and violence perpetrated on the AAPI community due to bigotry. Now, therefore, on this 15th day of April 2025, the mayor and the members of city council do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we urge the community to join and celebrate the AAPI Heritage Month. And here to accept our proclamation, we are honored to have Christabel, Denella, who is the chairman of our DEI, yes?
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words, please?
Yes, and I always get so nervous speaking to you all, so I wrote things down. Alright, good evening. My deepest thanks to our city council for proclaiming May as Asian American and Pacific Islander, or AAPI Heritage Month. So, did you know, the earliest recorded arrival of Asian people in what is now California were Filipino crew members on a Spanish galleon arriving in Moro Bay in 1587. The earliest documented instance of a settlement of Asian people in the US were also Filipinos who established one in St. Malo, Louisiana in 1763. So, there are now an estimated 24 million Asian Americans tracing their roots to more than 20 countries in East and Southeast Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands. All this said, I graciously accept this proclamation today as one member of this very diverse AAPI community, as a first-generation Filipino-American, as the oldest daughter of a retired ICU nurse and US Navy hospital corpsman, as a 10-year resident of El Segundo, and as the chair of the City of El Segundo's DEI Committee. My grandfather also fought for the US during World War II, and many members of my family and I included have continued this tradition of military, community, and public service. So, I share some of this to highlight the impact of history on us today. So, for instance, there were approximately 250,000 Filipinos recruited to fight as part of the US military during World War II. But after the war, these veterans were then denied the benefits they were promised for serving our country. This impacted the health, well-being, and generational wealth of hundreds of thousands of families here in the US. Another example, also during World War II, US Census data was used to imprison Americans of Japanese descent in internment camps. So, more recently, AAPIs are some of the least likely to fill out the census. One study showed that Asian Americans are more likely than other groups to worry that their census answers would be used against them. As you know, census data is used to draw legislative districts, distribute federal funds, and a number of many other uses. So, like all of us, I owe a great deal to those who came before. It is my hope that we have learned and grow from this shared US history involving all our communities. I am thankful for the effort, persistence, and hard work of the AAPI community, and I am in awe of our community's ability to take a stand and rise above when faced with challenges, inequity, exclusion, even hate and violence. Thank you again, truly, for proclaiming AAPI Heritage Month and recognizing the valuable contributions, rich history, and extraordinary resilience of the AAPI community. I am so proud that we continue to uplift and celebrate diversity here in El Segundo. DEI Committee member Emily Atmore also gathered some AAPI resources and shared them with city staff, so please do check them out. And thank you again.
Thank you, Christabel. Alright, next up, we have the El Segundo Big Five PTA Run for Education Day proclamation. Councilmember Jeru.
Alright, whereas the Big Five El Segundo PTA Run for Education was established 33 years ago to create a healthy and fun day for the community to come together to support public education. And whereas, the Big Five PTA Run for Education is hosted by the El Segundo Council of PTAs benefiting students attending all public schools in the district. The Run for Education has developed into the Council of PTAs' largest fundraiser, welcoming over 1,500 participants from the community and surrounding areas to the streets of El Segundo to run, jog, or walk the USA Track and Field Certified 5K or 10K course, or kids' Fun Runs throughout our town. And whereas, the funds raised from this event are used to support a wide range of students' needs, including technology requests, physical education equipment, departmental supplies, and college and career preparation programs, providing for unique student experiences, as well as supporting district parent education programs. And whereas, community support is of the utmost importance with this event, relying on the El Segundo Police Department, the City of El Segundo, parents from all our schools, high school student volunteers, local businesses, and community members. And whereas, community partners play a critical role in the success of this event, we are fortunate to have Big Five Sporting Goods as the title sponsor of the run, along with presenting sponsors Chevron, as well as the support of many local businesses who sponsor or participate in the event's Run Expo and Show Your Shirt and Save promotion. And whereas, the goal of the El Segundo Council PTA is to positively impact the lives of children and families, serving its members and its community by providing opportunities and experiences to make El Segundo School Districts the best it can be. Now, therefore, the mayor and the members of the city council of the City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim April 26, 2025 as El Segundo Big Five PTA Run for Education Day in El Segundo, and encourage all citizens to take part in the 33rd Run. And to accept this proclamation is Tara Gerson.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Thank you for proclaiming that April 26th is Run for Education Day. We really appreciate the support from the city majorly. We couldn't give back to the schools the way that we do without the support of the city. I recently came across a quote from, I think it was the Herald, from Rick Reeser. I'm sure you all know Rick Reeser, which sums up the race, the community, and El Segundo in general. And it really hit home for me, so I thought I'd share it. "The Run is a unique and phenomenal event that unites and showcases all of El Segundo. It became much more than a PTA fundraiser for our schools. It includes the city, the school district, our local businesses, people of all ages, and runners of all abilities throughout Southern California and beyond. It's a wonderful way to come together and do something in person that promotes health and fitness." So, again, thank you, and I accept the proclamation.
And Councilmember Keldorf will now give us the Professional Municipal Clerk Week proclamation.
Last, but certainly not least, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, professional municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, on this 15th day of April 2025, the mayor and members of the city council do hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th, 2025 as Professional Municipal Clerk Week in El Segundo, and further extend our appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Susan Truax, Acting Assistant City Clerk Lily Sandoval, Records Technician Patricia Harada, and all professional municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. If you all would come on up and accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much. In my short tenure, I have learned that the clerk's office is a very, very busy place, a very busy place. It seems that almost everything that comes through City Hall makes its way through the clerk's office at the beginning, the middle, or the end of its life. We handle council agendas in minutes, contracts, agreements, public records requests, ordinances, codifying, records retention and destruction, elections, and so much more. Many things that I'm still learning about. I would really like to credit our staff, Patricia and Lily. They both have had long tenures with the city. Both worked in City Hall before they came to the clerk's office. Patricia Harada-Aw is our records tech, and she has been with the clerk's office for eight years. And Lily Sandoval is our acting assistant city clerk. She's been with the clerk's office 10 years. And I'm very pleased to announce that she has recently earned her Certified Municipal Clerk certificate, which is a big deal. So, those of you who are capable of doing fancy math can figure out that between us, we have approximately 18 and 1/4 years' experience. we have approximately 18 and 1/4 years' experience in the Clerk's Department. No, but we are in very good hands. And in all seriousness, I would very much like to thank the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and our City Council for recognizing us and clerks around the world. It is a very important job, and it's a big one, and I'm really honored to have the staff that I work with. Thank you very much.
And with that, it is now time for public communications. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We certainly do. It does not have anything to do with an agenda item, but I would like to invite Nicolet Oberg. Hope I got that?
Just one?
Just one.
Okay, four minutes, please.
Four?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. My name is Nicolet Oberg, and I've been a resident of El Segundo for 20 years. We all witnessed or experienced the recent devastating fires around Los Angeles that destroyed entire urban communities, claimed at least 40 lives, and proved to be uncontrollable despite all the efforts by the firefighting departments, resulting in the costliest natural disaster in American history. The tiniest spark can start a fire. Embers can travel for over two miles, igniting structure after structure. The Palisades Hollywood, Runyon Canyon, and Studio City fires all started in built-up areas like ours in El Segundo. There's evidence suggesting that the Palisades fire was started by the reignition of a fire started by fireworks on New Year's Eve. Southern California is drier and more combustible than ever, with soil in the driest 2% in recorded history and temperatures reaching record highs. The fire risk presented by fireworks is now so great that detonation of any fireworks in California is undeniably irresponsible. We have to take the prevention of ignitions a lot more seriously. I'm proposing that the annual El Segundo Independence Day Fireworks Show is replaced by a drone show, a modern, safer, environmentally respectful, nonviolent, and innovative alternative. Let El Segundo be a role model in innovation, in keeping with the majority of its young, techno-savvy Silicon Beach businesses, its young families who value their commitment to environmentally sustainable lifestyles, and who care about their children's health and exemplary experiences. Several cities around the world have already taken the step to eliminate fireworks, including Tahoe City, Santa Rosa, and Sebastopol. My reasons for this proposal include the following: There is no guarantee that the fireworks show held in the rec park will not start a fire that causes adjacent houses to catch fire and potentially cause a massive uncontrollable fire like those we just witnessed. Fireworks' health-harming particle and ozone pollution contributes to global warming and catastrophic weather frequency. When burned, fireworks release toxic gases, sulfur dioxide, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, as well as particulate matter small enough to enter our bloodstream, along with metals such as aluminum, manganese, lead, copper, barium, strontium, cadmium, arsenic, and highly explosive picric acid, all of which are extremely toxic to humans and animals. Cadmium has been classified as a number-one human carcinogen. Lead and arsenic are not legal in fireworks, but since most fireworks are imported from China, they're possibly still components. Picric acid has caused permanent eye damage and symptoms including hepatitis, nephritis, and dermatitis. These toxins permeate the air, ground, and water, thereby entering our bodies. Children are even more susceptible to the harm caused by inhaling fireworks pollutants because their airway epithelium is more permeable. As residents of El Segundo, we cannot escape this pollution, and it's therefore a violation of our right to clean air and water. The South Coast Air Quality Management District in 2024 issued a special advisory for high particulate pollution due to the July 4th fireworks, stating that fireworks emissions from Independence Day often lead to the worst air quality days of the entire year. Many people suffer from asthmatic and other conditions that can be life-threatening when exposed to these toxins. Our bodies are already bombarded with carcinogens and other pollutants, which are impossible to avoid, but we can avoid using fireworks. Fireworks are always dangerous. In 2023, 10,000 people...
Are we out of time? We're out of time, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So thank you for hearing me, and I'm hoping that a drone show could be used, considered instead of the fireworks. There are many drone shows available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments? Council comments, questions? Seeing none, City Manager.
No comments, Mayor.
Very well. Onto Item 8, procedural motions. I will take a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Drew on the first.
Second.
Keldorf, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, 5-0. Consent. Are there any pulls?
I need to pull B5, please.
Very well, any other pulls? I'll take a motion to approve Items 6 through 8.
Baldino, so moves.
Second.
Giroux on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Over to five for you, Mayor Protem.
On page 13 of 75, there's a minor correction in the minutes. Line 13, you have that item pulled by Mayor Protem Baldino. It was pulled by the mayor.
It's a common mistake.
I know, you're so handsome. I'll move to approve with that one change in the meeting minutes. Otherwise, they were perfect.
I'll second it.
I did rewind the tape many times. It was very difficult.
Blinding. It gets blurry. That's Baldino on the first, Piment on the second. All in favor of approving five with the correction? Ten minutes. Aye. All right, passes. And now we are over to, there are no public hearings tonight, so Item 9, the reduction of city subsidy for collection of solid waste. City Manager, who will approve? I see the...
Yes, CFO Paul Chung will give this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council members. The item before you tonight is for your consideration to reduce the city's solid waste fee subsidy. Back in February of 2019, the City Council approved a 10-year franchise agreement with Edco Disposable Corporation to provide solid waste collection for single-family and two-family dwelling units here in El Segundo. The agreement included an annual CPI and also an option to extend for three years. The Council approved the agreement and voted to suspend $5 of the $20 per month solid waste fee, which was authorized through the Prop 218 process. By the time Edco's service started May 1st of 2019, the monthly rate was $21.16. The residents were charged $15 per month, and the city paid the difference of the $6.26, hence the subsidy of 29.4% for the city. If we fast forward to today, the current solid waste fee is $25.87. The residents pay $18.26, and the city subsidizes $7.61. Next month, effective May 1st of 2025, the solid waste fee, the monthly fee, is proposed to be $26.67 with a CPI of 3.1%. Tonight, the proposal, really from staff, is a discussion with the Finance Committee for almost a year. We went back and forth regards to an option to come forth to the Council, regards to potentially going away from the subsidy or phasing out the subsidy. And after a few calculations, it was recommended to phase it out over a five-year period. So if we look at this table, currently, the city subsidizes solid waste at 29.4%. And what staff is recommending the Council to consider is to go down from that 29 down to a 20% subsidy, starting next month on May 1st, and then lowering the subsidy by 5% each year until we reach zero subsidy in May 1st of 2029. And really, the reason for that is, of course, Council's direction on their, one of the strategic goals is to identify opportunities for new revenues, enhancement of existing revenues, and expiration of potential funding options to support programs and projects. Also, annually, the city has been budgeting $300,000 to cover the subsidy at that 29.4%. But if we were to drop it down to that 20% for, starting next month, you're looking at a $100,000 decrease on the budget. And then, of course, after a 10-year period, you're looking at approximately $3 million savings in the general fund. Also, the Finance Committee had emphasized to keep the Lifeline Assistance Program in place. With that said, the, really, the Council, that I am actually recommending for the Council to consider is Option 1 is, as I mentioned, to phase out the subsidy. So if we go from the 29.4% to a 20%, the resident portion will be $21.34, and the city will be $15.33. Now, Option 2 is if we stay at this 29.4% subsidy that we have been the past five years, the resident portion will be $18.83, and the city will pay $7.85. Now, if City Council does not move forward with the one or two options, Option 3 is to keep the current rate, monthly rate, at $18.26 for the residents, and then the city will go ahead and cover that CPI increase, which will bring the monthly fee to $8.41 that the city would have to cover. So just to kind of go into a little more detail on the options, as I mentioned, Option 1 is to reduce the subsidy from 29.4% to 20%, and that's, of course, decreasing every year for the next four years after that. Residents will pay $21.34, and the reason for that is the $2.51, that's the addition to, because of the increase in portion that the residents will cover, and then a $0.57 for that CPI increase. The city will pay $5.33, bringing the subsidy down to that 20% for, starting next month. If Council was to move forward with that recommendation, the Council would need to reimpose $3.08. Option 2, as I mentioned, if we keep the subsidy at this 29.4% that we've been at, effective next month, the resident will pay $18.83, city will pay $7.85, keeping that subsidy at 29.4%. The City Council will need to reimpose $0.57 of the original subsidy effective next month. And lastly, as I mentioned, if Council was not to move on the Option 1 and 2, Option 3 is for residents to continue paying the $18.26 that's currently in place, and the city will pay the $8.41, bringing their, our subsidy, an increase in the subsidy to a 31.5% increase, basically absorbing the CPI increase. And really, that's due to the Prop 218 process that is the fifth year, and we're entering into the sixth year, and we didn't do a Prop 218 process. With that said, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions for the Council. Thank you.
Council questions and comments?
I can go. Yeah. Having been here when we originally approved this to the Prop 218 process, the original intent was that all of the burden of the solid waste fees would be passed on to the residents, but we wanted to do that over time. So that was the objective when we did this. Granted, it was a different Council. We were, at that time, one of two cities in the entire, in Southern California, maybe California.
California.
In California that subsidized solid waste. The other one being San Diego. They have since reduced that entirely.
Yes, San Diego's the only one.
So we're left...
We are the only.
So absolutely think this is necessary. And the other thing is that we're getting incredible value from Edco. I don't know how long our contract is, but having, you know, being in this industry, $7 a week on average for a pickup in solid waste, all the expenses in the industry, by the way, landfill, transportations, all those disposal costs are going up exorbitantly, so we should probably anticipate whoever, whenever we go back out to bid, we're going to see a significant increase in solid waste costs. It's already happened in the City of LA, everywhere in California. The number of landfills that are available have been significantly reduced. So I think, yeah, it's time. So we've been putting this on with the last remaining city in all of California. It just seems like common sense.
With Edco, it was a 10-year agreement, franchise agreement, so it will take us to 29, basically, yeah.
Other Council comments?
I wasn't on Council when this happened, but I do remember that conversation, and I appreciate the wisdom of phasing this in over time, so it's not a shock to anyone. And I also am appreciative of making sure that Lifeline users are not going to be affected in any way. So if you're already getting help, this raise is not going to affect you, correct?
No.
Any other comments?
I was on the Council back then, and it was not a unanimous opinion at the time of phasing this in. Our residents cannot control their water bill costs, they can't control gas, they cannot control electricity. This is the one thing that, over time, in the 100-year history of this city that we have assisted with. At the time, the vote was to keep the city's piece constant, and the only reason that we imposed costs on the residents were Cal Recycles new impositions on us via a Senate bill. In that regard, I think $100,000 worth of subsidy in Option 3 is a very easy and simple bargain for us with our fixed-income residents. I think, in light of the last week when we blaseally bought $50,000 worth of lockers, which I'm sure any one of the people who were about to charge seven extra dollars on Week 4 would happily take and resell on Craigslist and recoup that. So I would wholeheartedly think we keep our century-long compact with the residents and go with Option 3.
I'm guessing what you were mentioning, Drew, was to go with Option 1, which is to completely phase it out over five years, correct? Yeah, I didn't make a motion, but...
Yeah, I concur with that. I think it's time, based on all the information we have. If you look at the City of LA, I think is, what, $57, $58 a month right now? I think this is, it's time to phase this out with the budgetary things we have coming up that we're going to have to deal with. We have to start checking off some boxes, so I'm in favor of Option 1.
I will say, I reject any methodology from the City of Los Angeles about how to perform any form of sanitation services. I will happily state that our Public Works Director and I have gone to battle at the Clog and recouped a series of reimbursements for what are some of our CIP and infrastructure projects to the tune of almost $2 million. So we're putting money back in our pocket. If, we do not capriciously spend money outside of our locker purchases here on the dais. I do not think this is a matter of caprice. I think this is something that is part of what makes El Segundo separate and different. And I appreciate the fact that there's a hill I'm about to die on as I continue to lose votes. I'm the sort of old style...
I admire you for continuing to try though.
That's right. I wish there were lottery picks I'd get from this. But I will say that this is part of what makes us different. Now, San Diego has its own battles to fight, and I appreciate that their sanitation issues are different than our own, but I think this is an entirely reasonable cost for us to absorb, and there are a lot of people in this town who do not show up at City Council meetings, and they do not post nasty things online. They are older, they are on fixed incomes, they've been here for a very long time, and as resentful as they were about getting new totes to drag up and down their driveway, I do not think us imposing these extra costs on them is something that we should do capriciously.
I respect your opinion on this. I would also like to point to the next two items that are coming up on our agenda if we want to talk about what the city is subsidizing for the residents. And you're going to see an incredibly large number. So while we have something that makes sense in the scheme of things, it is not an exorbitant cost in the scheme of things. We have been good about phasing this in, we've been reasonable about phasing this in, and I think this is an acceptable way to do this. So unless anybody else has any questions on this, I will, I will move to approve Option 1.
Drew on the first.
I'm on the second.
Boils on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Me.
4-1, Pimentel loses again. Keep the streak going. Thank you. Celebrate your victory. Go key my car. Okay. Item 10. Who wants to beat me up now? Aquatics User Group Evaluation and Aquatics Division's Strategic Planning. Ally the Hammer Mancini, who are you going to deputize to beat me this time? There we go. Is that a picture of the acacia pool? Is that a picture of the acacia pool? Great, great, other moments in Pimentel defeats the acacia pool.
All right. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here to talk about the user group success criteria. First, I want to provide a little bit of background for the success criteria. Six years ago, when the Aquatics Center first came online, we brought in seven user groups to allocate those lanes to. We allowed them to rent out space there. And at the request of the city council and the Aquatics Subcommittee, we were directed to do a success criteria evaluation on all of the groups. This evaluation was to determine the overall benefit of the programs to the residents of El Segundo. These user groups are evaluated on nine different criteria that you can see up there. Required documentation is one. This is their insurance paperwork and the items that I asked them to submit. Citizenship with the facility, this is how well they treat our staff and our facility. Are the fiscal responsibility, if they're paying on time and responsive on the bills that I send to them. Space utilization, how many swimmers they have in each lane or in the body of water. El Segundo residency, they get a, they get points for the percentage of El Segundo residents on their teams. Documented success, this would be winning tournaments, growth of their organization. Community benefit programs. If they're offering scholarships to El Segundo residents, if they're offering free clinics, coaching certifications, and then timely submission of reports and advertisements. They have to submit quarterly reports to me, and they also have to provide ads to the office that, uh, we can hand out if people request information on the teams that practice there. So going forward, how I get all of this data is I send them all a document that they are required to self-evaluate. And then, once they've self-evaluated and they've filled out all the material and provided me with all of this information, they send it back to staff, and then staff sit down and do a staff evaluation of the information. So we go through all of these things. There's a weight to all of it, as you can see from the points. It's out of a total of forty. Starting off with Alpha Aquatics, they submitted their documented success. Each team submits this, so I have a recap, uh, before I show their scores. Alpha Aquatics is a youth competitive swim team that practices at the facility. They had two swimmers go to the Olympic trials, they won mid-sized team category at sectionals, and the, uh, athletes that scored points for El Segundo High School Swimming were on the Alpha team. Alpha Aquatics submitted their rosters, they did not turn in their quarterly reports, and they did provide their coaching certifications. The staff, the, they self-assessed at twenty-nine points, and staff also assessed them at twenty-nine points. Their limiting factors included, uh, late submission, uh, the resident participation was twenty to thirty-nine percent, and they only scored six out of ten for community benefit, and then they, uh, did not submit their quarterly reports. Moving on to South Bay United, South Bay United is a competitive youth water polo club. They had substantial splashball program growth, they offered financial scholarships, they had growth in their adaptive water polo program, and they sponsored the Board Riders Events. They provided their rosters, quarterly reports, and coaching staff certifications. They had a self-assessed score of thirty-five out of forty, and staff scored them thirty out of forty. Uh, they had a late submission, which is what resulted in the lower score, and, uh, they did not provide the backup for the documented measurable success. Moving on to Coastal Masters, this is one of our adult, this is our only adult water polo club. They had men's thirties national championships, women's forties national finalists, and they had seventeen USA Water Polo All-Americans, and they have four Olympic athletes, a part of their organization. Coastal Masters provided rosters, quarterly reports, and coaching certifications. Self-assessed score of twenty-seven, staff-assessed score of twenty-seven. The reason for the lower points is the low El Segundo residents, ten to nineteen percent, and they only provided one community benefit program. Moving on to Tower Twenty-Six, Tower Twenty-Six is an organization that is based in the Pacific Palisades. They were heavily affected by the fires, which was going on while I was collecting this information, and it made it so they were not able to provide all of the stuff that was needed. They did provide, uh, for the success criteria, they did provide all of their insurance information and all the things that were required to maintain their renter status with us, but they did not provide the other material for the success criteria because they were dealing with that. A lot of their swimmers have actually shifted to our pool since their pools have been shut down. So there's, uh, not available for the self-assessed score. Staff scored them sixteen out of thirty-nine based on them submitting their required documentation. This is a one-off. I believe it's a excellent organization. They're great to work with. They've scored very highly in the past, and I expect them to score highly in the future. SCAC, uh, Southern California Aquatics is an adult swim team or masters team. They provided swim clinics, participates in swim meets, intensive tech coaching. They participate in triathlons, and they do triathlon training, and they also provide ocean clinics. They provided their rosters, did not provide quarterly reports, and did provide coaching certification. They did a self-assessed score of thirty-six with a staff-assessed score of thirty-one. They lost points for the quarterly reports and the documented measurable success. They didn't provide enough backup. Beach Cities is another youth swim team, competitive swim team. They had a lot of documented measurable success, so they had the twenty-twenty-four Silver Medal Club. Uh, they got second place in Junior Nationals for the women's team. They were team champions in the Speedo Sectionals Medium Team Division. They got second place in California Swimming Winter Age Group Championships. They also offer need-based scholarships, they volunteer with, uh, the grassroots neighbors, food donations, that's a, that's a charity. And then they also rented out the pool for a Olympic Trials viewing party where the kids were allowed to have a fun time in the pool while watching the Olympic Trials. It was a really neat event. Beach Cities provided all the information that was needed, self-assessed score of thirty-two and a staff-assessed score of thirty-two. The reason that they scored lower is it was zero percent, zero points for El Segundo residency, which just means that they have less than ten percent of their entire organization as El Segundo residents. It does not mean that they have zero residents on their team, just less than ten percent of the entire organization. Trojan Water Polo is another youth water polo team, competitive team. They, their success included Junior Olympics Top Ten, Junior Olympics All-American. They put twelve teams into Junior Olympics. They provide scholarships for El Segundo residents. They kicked off a splashball program, and they are hiring El Segundo residents as coaches. Trojan provided all the necessary material, they self-assessed thirty-five points, staff assessed them at thirty-two points. They didn't score full points on El Segundo resident participation and for providing events for community benefit. That was our final user group, so as you can see here, these are all of the scores stacked up next to each other. I will say that there was substantial growth from the previous year, uh, which was the, um, I, I think that all of the teams have improved substantially. I believe that's it. Oh, the scores for the previous year, it was, it was out of forty-five the previous year because there was some issues with the, with the scoring, so I had to adjust it, but they did end up scoring higher for twenty-twenty-four. So it was requested at two council meetings ago for information on this and what exactly we are doing with it. And I wanted to provide a little bit of information on our contract service that we are bringing on by the name of Councilman Huntsicker. It's a consultant group that is going to come on board and give a facility business plan. Aquatics Facility Business Plan for the city of El Segundo's Aquatics Department. They are going to be collecting all this information along with quite a bit of other stuff and providing a business plan. The business plan is set to include an executive summary, a market analysis, uh, operations plan, management plan, which includes the lane space utilization, and a financial plan, and a bunch of other stuff. But in terms of this, it was originally designed and requested by the Aquatics Subcommittee and council to use to evaluate these teams and determine if one team wants more space, how do we give it and take it away from another team that isn't performing as well? It has not been used for that yet, but we do have all of the data over the course of the last six years, and it is something that we are going to keep providing this consultant group with to help us make that decision. The recommendation on the staff report is to essentially file and report, or file and receive this, and then once Councilman Huntsicker completes their analysis, the kickoff meeting is Tuesday of next week, a week from today. Once they complete this analysis, then we bring it back to you guys and present on it. And that's all I have.
Council questions, comments?
All right, so I, I was the one pushing to have this presented. I know it was presented at the Aquatics Subcommittee, so I know some of you have seen this before, and I know how much work goes into this and I, that you've been tasked with, so I appreciate, uh, you, you taking the time to do it. So, um, there's a couple of reasons why I wanted to start talking about this. Number one, when that criteria was set up was, I believe, in two thousand and nineteen. So that was, I, I mean, I was sitting like where Barbara's sitting right now, um, complaining about it. So, um, I, you know, now, now that I've had a little bit different view of things. But I think that with bringing on this consultant now, I think it's incumbent upon us to start giving direction about what we actually want to see. So one of the, a little bit of confusion I have is that we have someone coming on that we're hiring, that you're having a meeting with, yet we haven't actually given direction up here about what we want to see. And now that we have the El Segundo Aquatics Center and you have the Plunge coming online, we have to make some decisions about what we want these two pools to be. And so the idea behind having these user groups and all that other stuff up there, it's great. Self-reporting, I get why we have to do it, but I can tell you right now, if you audit all of those rosters and you find any council member name up here other than Keldorf, they're not legitimate, okay? So there's no way for you to go through all of that. I think it's gonna be important, based on what we want these two pools to be, for the consultant to actually make a plan for us. So one of the things I think we should talk about is the El Segundo Aquatics Center. What do we want to aim for as far as subsidy goes? Because we, we know it doesn't, we don't make money on the pool, we, we lose money on pools. So it's a matter of what, what's acceptable for a subsidy, for example. I think right now at the El Segundo Aquatics Center, it's about seventy, seventy-five percent cost recovery, which is pretty good. But I believe if you're gonna have a competition pool, which is what that is, I think we have to aim for about a ninety percent. Now you have the Plunge, that's a community pool. Normally, the cost recovery is about fifteen percent. I think that's gonna be a gigantic number out of our general fund. So I believe that we should aim for about a fifty percent cost recovery on that. And if we're able to give that, Councilman Huntsa- Councilman Huntsicker, right? Um, some, you know, uh, uh, goals to hit, then they can form the plan based on that. But otherwise, they're forming a plan based on not knowing what we want. And as far as the criteria goes, I, I think I would like to know what they think the criteria should be. When we put it together, I understand why that was all put together. I know there was a lot of input on there and, you know, the, like, measuring of success of the clubs. I, I gotta be honest, I, I don't care. And the reason being is, the best performing clubs are gonna be the best clubs anyway. And that, like, no matter how many Olympians you have on there, it doesn't change the revenue generation of the pool. So I, I don't, i- if you, if, if the, the consultant thinks that we should keep it up there, great. If not, I, I don't know why we have that up there, other than the fact that you were told to do it. So what I would like to see is, I think we should give direction and give them a goal so we can come up with a proper business plan. And that's why I have that up there.
Yeah, I have similar concerns about how we're gonna pay for both pools. The success criteria, brilliant. I don't know who came up with that idea, but that is absolutely gold. Uh, no, seriously, you did a great job putting that together. We also, though, if I remember correctly, back when we opened the pool, we were having all this strife, which is part of the reason we did the success criteria, is to try and understand the merits of each program, because we didn't really have that knowledge base at the time. We certainly know them a lot better now through history and all your interactions. We also did a, um, like a competitive bid situation back then, where we, they bid. Have we revisited that, or is it all pretty much just incremental pricing?
This is the same group of people that are renting a pool, and the pricing has been increased.
It's just been like escalation based on CPI or something?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know. This is not necessarily the topic at hand, but to Councilman Drew's point about how we pay for this, I think this pool, you, you all know better than I do, because you have kids that go through that pool. I have not, um, well, one daughter, I guess. But I, I assume it's incredibly valuable for these programs, and they can't, I would also assume that it's maybe priced, I don't know where it's at versus the market, but I, I agree with, when we look at the, whatever the consultants are putting together, we should look at how are we priced versus the market? What is the elasticity of pricing? How much can we go up with these groups? Because I agree from a, from an intent standpoint, that this pool is designed to be more of a competitive pool, and the, part of the reason we did not kill the Plunge was to keep that pool open to the residents as a recreational facility. And so I, I agree that from a funding standpoint, we should be looking for a hundred percent cost recovery at this pool if we can, and then, so, you know, subsidize more of the recreational one. So those are my thoughts.
Other council comments?
Question, are, and have any of these user groups tried to renegotiate their existing time? Is that part of what the, the consultant will also be evaluating? Any kind of infighting amongst user groups, competing for availability?
No major issues, but there's always competition for availability. It's stayed pretty status quo over the course of the last six years. There has been some groups that have willingly dropped time or dropped lanes, and then it's been picked up by the next in line. But for the most part, it saved, it has stayed the same, but there are groups that are asking for more time always.
Got it.
That's just not available.
Okay. So when we were working with the consultant, it's really on, to your point, maximizing, right, of revenue stream? Less so, I mean, I was also in the audience, and it was much more so at that time about who got what and when. But that's not what we're asking the consultant to work on for us. It's strictly expense-revenue scenario.
Actually, I, I would say that it goes hand in hand, because, uh, one of the things I'd like to see now that we, these user groups, especially the youth ones, all right, you have four youth, right, youth, youth programs, you have two swim, two, two water polo, is, who's got the plan going forward? Like, what does the organization look like? Because we're about, we're, we're, this is a, a very sought-after set of hours, okay, in the South Bay for these pools, all right? We're very centrally located, that works for businesses, that works for youth sports too. It's an easy place to get to. Um, you have no problem filling the minutes in that pool. But I would like to sit there and say, who's got a plan to take kids from five years old to eighteen years old, all right? Or even, even into, to, to adults, and after they get on from college? And who, who's got that plan? What does it look like? Um, I, I'd like to, I mean, if I'm the consultant, I want to see what that is, because that's gonna probably help determine, hey, you know, maybe it's better to go to one or two or, or, or three rather than the number you have, if someone has a better plan. I just wanted to kind of open it up to, to give this consultant as much opportunity to maximize what we can do with this pool. You know, one of the, I know what you, you mentioned about price elasticity, that is one of the, the tough parts. For like, running events is difficult, right? Because it costs so much to run the event, because we're trying to recoup what we would have in those days. So there's not a lot of events there that might, that we might have at other places. But from a revenue generation standpoint, it might not make sense. But this is what, again, I just want to be able to give this person the tools to give us an actual plan, realistically how we can hit ninety percent or even a hundred percent, and then realistically how we can hit fifty, um, on, on the Plunge. And I just think that from a, a budgetary standpoint, subsidies, we're, we're gonna have to come up with some creative solutions to these problems.
Other comments?
Um, yeah. First, let me say that serving on the Aquatics Subcommittee, I'm incredibly impressed about how staff has stepped up and kind of filled the void of not having an aquatics manager. You guys have done a tremendous job running that facility. In the meetings I've been, the user groups are very happy with the events that are going on, very happy with the customer service they're receiving over there. And correct me if anything I say is wrong, as I try to summarize what we're working on and where we're trying to go. The idea of the consultant is, as you said, we've got an aquatic center that, I believe council has already said, needs to be cost-recovery focused, and then we have the Plunge coming online. So the consultant's gonna tell us what it's costing us to run the Aquatics Center, what it's going to cost us to run the Plunge. And then based on that, they can tell us what it would be to subsidize the Plunge for open swim, or if we wanted to charge for beginning swim lessons, what that rate would be if we were trying to get to a, some type of cost recovery, correct?
Correct.
And so we're trying to use this consultant to give us kind of a roadmap or game plan of how we're gonna treat and program the Aquatics Center, what we're doing with the Plunge, as well as what we're doing as far as staffing at Hilltop. Because we're now, we've got, we've got three pools that are gonna be open, offering a variety of services to different levels of individuals. So I think once we get that report, that's when you come back to council and say, here's what the numbers are going to be to staff the Plunge, to put chemicals in it, to maintain it, and here's what it's gonna cost, you know, just to run the programs. So if you wanted to. So if you wanted to cost recovery at this, this is what your, your swim class is going to be. If you wanted to subsidize, it can be down here. We can compare and contrast with, with other services we provide at Parks and Rec, because Parks and Rec is a service. And then you can hopefully get some type of policy direction from council about maximize recovery here, subsidize this here up to this extent, hopefully without us getting too much into the weeds of the finer details of how things are done. But I do agree that it's an important conversation to kind of set the stage of how these facilities are treated, how the success criteria are going to be measured in the future, and really, what, what is the point of the plunge versus the aquatic center? And how do we think it'll best serve our community? So I'm hoping that kind of summarized the marching orders as you go into your meeting. And I think this has been a good timely conversation to help you have that conversation with the consultant on what, what type of information and input we'd like to get out to help make our decisions to help you guys do your jobs better.
Makes sense? Councilor Drew?
One thing, Michelle, I think when you were asking, were you, were you getting to, as far as decisions on user groups? I, I don't think that should be made in the dais the way it was before. We forced that, I remember that, I was one of the ones out there screaming and yelling about it. But I think it needs to be based on what the numbers and what the professionals are telling you to do that makes the most sense personally. I think it's, that should, in the end, when all is said and done, come down to a staff decision.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I'm not that sure that was where you were going, I think I cut you off, and I apologize.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's exactly where I was going. And the one thing that I would add to just, kind of, we've been circling the wagons on future events coming up, and I don't know if it's within the scope of the consultant, but Olympics twenty twenty-eight, there are, I want to be mindful of major events that maybe are one-offs, but opportunities to rent that space out to user groups that fall outside of our typical users as well.
And I think to that, and we are registered with the LA twenty-eight site to list that thing. I think there's broad consensus here. I mean, look, I would, I would not stop at a hundred percent. You know, I mean, there is, there's not a lot of opportunities for water polo tournaments in LA County, and there's not a lot of pools that can support it. So if we can get things in there like that. Certainly, a lot of the competitive swimming events, where there were several pools, the Palisades and Samo, who were hosting, that obviously are not now. So there's a window of opportunity for those things to go shopping. So if there is a, a, an opportunity to maximize that, that pool's revenue, and who knows? This council, this, this consultant may have clever windows to, to drive fee-earning business at the plunge, whether it's off-hours, splash ball, or things that it can support.
Yeah, I mean, the younger user groups were there for a while, so.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, do we have consensus to receive and file on item ten?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. Well, look at that, we have one consensus. I did not lose item ten. All right, item eleven, Recreation Park Sport Courts Revenue and Use Analysis. The floor is yours.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. At the March eighteenth council meeting, the City Council directed Recreation Parks and Library staff to present an overview of tennis and pickleball usage regarding reservations, revenue, and leagues for purposes of future planning. Recreation staff put our heads together to present you with the following presentation of twenty twenty-four court usage as the park is currently laid out. So as you are probably aware, Recreation Park is home to the majority of El Segundo's recreational amenities. The park is home to three ball fields, open grass, two playgrounds, four recreation centers, a hockey rink, and many courts. We have five tennis courts, we have eight pickleball courts, four which were implemented in twenty nineteen, and then four more in twenty twenty-three. We have two dual-line volleyball courts, they have volleyball and then also service for pickleball courts, one paddle tennis court, one basketball court, not including the teen center one. And then all of our court amenities are open from eight to nine, seven days a week. So our tennis courts, so we have mostly, they are used by public rentals. We have about seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six hours. We have our girls and boys tennis teams, they operate Monday through Friday, three to five P M. on courts one through four, and then courts one through five, two to seven P M. on match days. So during their respective seasons. We have the El Segundo Marine League, they play on three courts one day a week from nine to one, on and off throughout the year. We have one contract instructor, Jaguar Tennis, and then they're just mainly operating out of one court. And then we have walk-ons that are not in this report. So the courts are also blocked out for maintenance and repair needs, park closures, and pickleball league and event schedule. So pickleball leagues, they use court two and three, are blocked out from five P M. on Wednesday nights through Thursday mornings, one P M. So that's eight hundred and twenty and a half hours. So in twenty twenty-four, the total of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five available hours. The court were blocked or reserved for fifty-four percent of the time. So for our revenue for tennis courts, our rental revenue is just under seventy-seven thousand. With five courts, that's averaging about just under fifteen thousand per court. And then our programming revenue is sixty-five thousand two hundred and nine. Please note that pickleball usage is not reflected in the pickleball, or it is reflected in the pickleball revenue, not the tennis court revenue. So while revenue totaled a hundred and forty-two thousand, a hundred and sixty-two dollars, we had to pay our contract instructor their cut of registration, which is a seventy-thirty split, and then replace one of the tennis poles throughout the year. So our tennis programming netted about a hundred and five thousand for the year, which is about twenty-one thousand per court. For the pickleball courts, so that is eight courts, mostly public rentals at fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven hours. We had one pickleball event, Jingle Fest. We do drop-in programs on Fridays, Mondays, Saturdays, and Sundays. We have our pickleball leagues for four seasons throughout, throughout the year, which service about a hundred-plus teams per season. We have three contract instructors, and these instructors don't just operate on these eight courts. They also utilize the volleyball courts and occasionally the paddle tennis court. And then we have walk-on hours that are not reflected. And then the courts are also blocked out for maintenance, repair needs, and park closures. So during twenty twenty-four, we also did the resurfacing of one of the original courts. So that was a period of time that wouldn't be reflected this coming year. So in total, of the thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty available hours, the courts were either blocked or reserved sixty-eight percent of the time. So for the pickleball court revenue, so rental revenue is about a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five with eight courts. That's about twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifteen per court. Programming revenue is about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents. So programming revenue does not, or it does include the pickleball programming that took place on the tennis, volleyball, and paddle tennis courts. So for the pickleball courts, we do have some more expenditures than we do have in tennis. We designate recreation staff for these programs, so we have a specialist and staff who come in and tape the courts when they use volleyball and operate the drop-in program. We have the contract instructor cut, the seventy-thirty split, and then maintenance and equipment. We spend a bit more on pickleball courts just due to wear and tear. So we have the resurfacing project that was just over eleven thousand. And then operating costs for programs and events. So our net here was three hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and four, which divided by eight courts is just under forty thousand per court.
Lene, the resurfacing is, what, one every, probably every three to five years?
Probably every three to five years.
But they get used a lot, so, so that's, that was just, we just redid it, so that's why it's in there this year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did the other court the year before. So residency numbers, so for tennis courts, our public rentals are at about seventy-eight percent, while our contract instructors are at eighty-two percent. Pickleball, we have sixty-six public rentals, contract instructors forty-nine percent. Pickleball leagues, drop-in, our staff-led programs see about fifty-two percent residency. And I also, I don't have necessarily the residency numbers for Marine League, but they're just El Segundo teams that compete against Manhattan Beach or Redondo teams, and then E S H S, I don't know. Okay, so for the usage overview, both tennis and pickleball courts are reserved more than they are available for the public to walk on. Tennis is reserved fifty-four percent of the time, while pickleball is reserved sixty-eight percent of the time. So as you can see, overall, pickleball is generating more revenue than tennis. However, we are investing more resources and have more expenditures into pickleball-specific programming. Just a few notes while we're discussing this is, in July twenty twenty-four, so halfway through this period, our rates did increase, so we were charging a five, ten, and fifteen, and we swapped to a ten and twenty options for the payment for public rentals. And then also park considerations, a tennis court utilizes about one to four cars per public rental or programming. Wow, yes, so for pickleball courts is one to sixteen cars. So we do see when we are overflowing with programming at these courts, we tend to have other areas like our senior center that is affected by parking. And then also the E S H S, we are their home courts. So they follow, C I F follows U S T A rules for tennis. They do not allow tournament play to take place on the courts with pickleball markings. So preseason and league games are permitted, but they would not be able to host C I F. So this concludes my presentation on pickleball and tennis. I did, if we go into some of the other courts, I did prepare some slides, so we can look at those as well. But myself, Rachel, and Ally are available for questions.
Could you go, thank you for doing this analysis. Early on, there was the number of public hours for tennis, I thought it was like twelve thousand hours roughly, at the very beginning. Yeah.
Total hours, twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-three.
Okay, public rental, seventy, okay, seventy-three hundred. So I guess the question I had is, no, forget it, okay, I'm good.
All right, so this was, this was mine again, so this is Lance Knight, okay? So again, the reason why I'm bringing this up is a couple of reasons. Number one, we're about ready to spend an awful lot of money over the next however many years redoing Rec Park, okay? We're making a lot of decisions based on survey information. Here's hard data. So that's number one. Number two, we really have to start looking at where we're able to generate revenue. We have a lot of expenses, we have a lot of subsidy, we have growing costs. And when you look at these numbers, it becomes abundantly clear where your revenue generation is coming from. So one of the things about the pickleball court numbers that I thought was really interesting is that that's literally being run by a one-part-time employee, Connie, the pickleball pit bull, just knows everything about it, but she does an unbelievable job doing all this. It's a part-time employee, and then there's part-timers that help line the courts and everything, because it's, it's literally busted at the seams. You're, they're taping over volleyball courts, they're taping over the tennis courts in order to be able to not even satisfy the demand for it. So when I look at this, I see that, also essentially, if you get to the pickleball one there, the, the net, the net revenue, understand that the size of one tennis court equals four pickleball courts. So the reality is, it's about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars net per court. That's really what it is, right? As opposed to twenty-one thousand for tennis. When you look at this, in order for us to satisfy the demand and generate much-needed revenue, I think we have to start looking at what should this look like in the go-forward twenty years from now, when we start looking at what the courts are going to be? Because, you know, the, right now, I think immediately, honestly, we should convert one of those courts over. Because that is going to equate, that literally, that number by this time next year will be half a million dollars net. And, and growing. So I think when you have an opportunity like this, you have to take advantage of it. The numbers are literally dictating what we should be doing. As far as the, the growth of sports, you know, sorry, tennis is not a gross sport. Pickleball is a gross sport. We have one paddle court, right? I know that gets used a lot. As a matter of fact, it needs to be resurfaced, if you get a chance to take a look at that. That's a gray one, but it satisfies the need. The volleyball courts, I think, have zero rentals. People just drop in and play. So I think we have some options to look at, but I would like to see us consider immediately looking how we can take advantage of this. We need the revenue. So I also know that the question on company, you mentioned it, about schools and C I F. I'm sorry, I'm, I'll be more than happy to go down that road with whoever wants to come in here and talk about it. But the reality is that the high school used to have four courts. They paved over those four courts. When they came here, we gave them five. So what I'm saying is that we can't make decisions based on that. We are more than willing to help wherever we can, but we have to make decisions based on the go-forward and what the right thing is for us to generate revenue and satisfy the needs of the residents. So based on these numbers, I believe that we need to convert another court. Now, I will cede the floor.
Further council comments?
I would think if that was the point of the agenda, that was, be what would be agendized. Because what you're talking about now is different than let's talk about the usage, right? I would also think that if we wanted an in-depth analysis of, of usage, we would make a decision like this based off of more than a PowerPoint, nice PowerPoint, it's good to have numbers. But what this has shown to me is that our Parks and Rec Department and our Parks and Rec Commission has done a very good job of adapting and adding pickleball courts when needed, and still trying to provide the service of tennis and paddle and everything else as needed. And that is us standing out of the way and letting people do their jobs, which is to provide parks and recreation to everyone in town. So if this is a conversation we want to have, then I would suggest we have it in such a way to where we would ask this question of our Parks and Rec Commission to take a look at, have some public hearings to find out what the community feels, before we start deciding how many courts we're going to get. You know, I, I don't want to jump into the weeds without having there been enough public discourse about what these decisions are going to be. Number two is, we have already decided on phase one of park and rec renovations. And that's going to be some repairs, we're not touching the courts, we're going to repair some of the decaying walls, we're going to add some more green space, but it's mostly drainage, it's mostly irrigation, it's really boring stuff, but just to make the fields more usable. I don't have any desire appetite to revisit phase one or to start talking about adding courts or anything. If you want to talk about changing a tennis court to a pickleball court, I think that's a conversation to be had in the future, after it's gone through a, a public process. Because I, I think there is value in recognizing that, you know, the city, especially when it comes to parks and programmings, it's all a subsidy, right? We are, we are here providing a service, we are here providing recreational opportunities to all of our residents. And I get that there's an explosion in pickleball. And, you know, you could also say at one time racquetball was very popular, and now we've got very damp storage units that are, are no use. But we can't take them down, it's too expensive, the wall is actually being used for handball and everything else. So I would be very against any decision being made from the dais going down. I'd much rather hear from staff and our commission coming up if this was a need that we needed to look at. But what I've seen since this report is that staff has adapted. We've added courts where we could, we have, we've met the needs. Is it lucrative right now? Sure, right now, obviously. But we're not in the business of running the Dave Busters. You know, we're providing parks, we're providing services, and that costs money, that, that costs staff time. I, I think that it's a good conversation to have, but I don't think a decision can be made tonight based on what we've just seen.
I wasn't looking for a decision to be made tonight, I'm making a recommendation just based off the numbers. And I would argue that if these numbers were available, when we were making our plans for the park, I think our decision would have been a little bit different.
Other council comments?
Perhaps, but I, I think when you're talking about programming and parks and people, it's not always about numbers.
Councilor Keldorf?
Well, I guess to Lance, to your point, my question would be about that usage number, because it seems like we still have a lot of hours left available. So is that argument then, yes, there are hours available, but staff is, is putting in a lot of time and potentially financial resources? in a lot of time and potentially financial resources to convert courts from one thing to the other? And that's, I mean, it looks like we still have, you know, a third-ish of hours available for pickleball.
Well, how, how are those hours divi, like defined availability-wise? Is that six to...
The total hours was based on eight to nine P M., three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and then the hours were pulled from our reservation reports on how we blocked the courts out.
Okay, is that call coming from, um, Rec One? Do we ever get that utilization functionality? Good. So it's not a bunch of manual reporting you guys have to do? These are... So we, we still don't have that functionality with Rec One that they promised us when we did that RFP and scoped out that project four or five years ago? Okay. That's unfortunate, it's how you have to do all that manual labor.
Lots of insight.
What's that?
Got a lot of insight from it.
Yeah, no, it's good. I mean, I, the whole thing about the Rec One, not to go on a complete, complete diatribe, but is to be able to make these decisions on our resource allocation and what our fields are being utilized, because we keep hearing from groups, we don't have enough field space, but we still don't have data on it, we still have to manually track that. I hope we prioritize that like we prioritize other things, like an ERP, um, certainly, because that was supposed to be functionality that we paid for, bought and sold years ago. Yeah, I'm still trying to get my head around the numbers. I think it's great, appreciate all the hard work that it went into it. I agree that we should, uh, discuss it further. I also agree that we should get input from Rexon Park and, um, more, more to be discussed, sounds like to me. Oh, the racquetball courts, what are, what did we decide to do that, with those?
Currently, they are not playable, they're in a little bit of disrepair. Yeah, so we did, uh, we asked Elias, um, his recommendation on how much damage or what it would cost, and it was a few hundred thousand dollars to like just get them back into plain condition.
But is there a demand for racquetball? I mean, if no one's asking for it and we're using it for storage, it's probably going to be storage for the...
We receive a few emails.
Yeah, Elias plays.
One of those people are Elias now.
Like, a, as I recall, when we were looking at phase one of the redo, we were looking at places that we might be able to add additional court space. It was kind of exhausted, even paving over the, the, the lawn bowling green space was not working at the time. Uh, although if the revenue generates on this, and if it costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put a pad down, you know, your ROI is at eighteen months on a pickleball surface, that may be something in phase one point five, uh, we look at. I think that if we probably looked at what the tennis court demand is, even if it lists out at fifty percent or whatever, fifty-four percent of total available hours, I have a feeling that a tennis player hours, you know, if we condensed it to a tighter timeframe of when, when people actually have time to play it, i- it might be a little bit overtaxed. Uh, I, I value this, I am, I think that when we do our fee study, I think we should take a really hard look at a group that is not paying anything to use it in prime time for eighteen hundred hours. Do they pay for Stevenson Field, the high school?
ESHS joint use agreement.
That's part of the joint use agreement? I snuck that one in. I mean, they've got a baseball field.
We do?
I mean, this is amazing to me. Yeah, it, uh, well, no, I know, look, it's, it's, they've, they've got, look, we, 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 we have all been, we've all been by the part where they had the hysterics about having tennis practice there last year, and we go there and there's nobody there, right? The kids are just hanging out in their cars. Uh, that's, well, my neighbor likes to play tennis, she gives me the full rundown. So I think that would be a, uh, i- it, it would be fascinating to see a tighter timeline, perhaps on when tennis utilization spikes. I have a feeling it's about a hundred percent rented from like ten to four or something like that. But no, thank you very much, it's certainly very informative, and, and I think that as we go forward to phase one of the rec and parks, it should inform some decisions we can make, especially if there's an ability if the cost recovery is this quick on pickleball, presuming it stays in vogue. Anything further, or do we have consensus to receive and file? All right, thank you very much. All right, reports, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I am happy to report that April is Records and Information Management Month. It gets a whole month, it's so important, the job that we do, um, as far as handling the, what we hang on to and what we get to destroy at the end of ten years. The IIMC has many suggestions for how to celebrate the month, including a proclamation, I will spare you, branded material, a staff party, rim trivia, um, a parade on Main Street, that was a staff request. But in all seriousness, we are just working with Iron Mountain to get rid of our extra stuff, and I'd also like to dispel any rumors, um, that the clerk's staff will be taking clerk's week off, that's not a thing. So thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I cannot wait for Clerk Trivia Night. Councilmember Keldorf?
I didn't have anything, but I guess now that we're on a Parks and Rec, uh, do we have an update on where phase one is in process? Is that a Parks and Rec? That would be great. I would love to hear that, because I think, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Giroux?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Councilmember Boils?
Let me quick, we had a SCAG meeting, Southern California Association of Governments, uh, week before last, at the Community Economic Housing Development Committee. We elected new chair and vice chair, and we got a really interesting presentation from Altadena and Palisades folks on regional recovery and resilience policy, lessons learned, um, about making your home and your community fire-wise, smart-wise, I think is the terminology, something maybe worth looking into. There's some really low-hanging fruit in terms of how to make your home secure that we should be looking at, um, and I think we could help our residents with that, I'd be happy to forward the information. I learned a lot about my own house and my neighborhood. We also, during the regional council meeting, adopted the twenty-twenty-five federal legislative platform, there's a lot of concerns about federal funds flowing down to SCAG. SCAG is the biggest administrator of funds, because it covers six counties for Southern California. And then we approved the twenty-twenty-five active transportation program with a hun, fifteen projects totaling thirty-five million and under, another a hundred and thirteen contingency projects totaling nine hundred and seventy-two million. Finally, um, there were two companies that presented on hydrogen, most, mostly on electric, and it was fascinating to learn how far electric has come for mid-range and long-range vehicles, trucks coming out of ports, but not just ports, distribution companies, et cetera. The tech is right around the corner, further evidence that anything that we can do in this city to, especially now as we're in the finance committee, Councilmember Baldy, Mayor Protem, excuse me, we're evaluating fleets, really good opportunity to look at utilization, sharing of vehicles to get better utilization of that asset, as well as going to electric and having the infrastructure in place to doing that. So, uh, great meeting overall, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Um, yeah, I want to thank Ally, um, she helped Steve Loops, the middle school, and Principal Devontes, they did a design week, I know we got that email last minute about coming to be judges, and Ally went and met with the middle school kids to talk about areas in town that could use some redesigns. She talked about the dog park could use some love, maybe Washington Park. They also had others come in and talk about board games, and so the students either designed a new dog park or a new playground at Washington Park or a board game, and then, uh, members of the community would come in and basically rate those. So, uh, I want to thank Ally for going and speaking with the students and talking about, uh, parks in our town. I was there to do some of the evaluations, and they were very excited, and you wouldn't believe the level of things they could think about for a dog park, sprinklers and pools and beaches, and, and it was, it was really fun. And then also I attended the SCAG legislative update, found out about not just the problems that our federal government, uh, found out about the sixty-eight billion dollar deficit at the state, and then proceeded to hear about the litany of new bills coming out of Sacramento, um, most of which continue on the same theme of mandating intense density housing and stripping away, uh, local control. There's several like SB six seventy-seven, which is going to expand SB nine and allow us to collect any fees. Senator Allen has SB seven fifteen, which is talking about reallocating arena numbers from those affected by fires to other communities. Uh, and so what I'd like to put on the agenda is, I would like to have an ad hoc that would have two council members to look at the, especially the housing bills that come out, and pick the ones that we want to at least send a letter to oppose, because this has been going on for a long time, and I just don't want to sit back and not do anything knowing that the goal in Sacramento is to continue to deprive cities, to zone the city as they think it should be zoned for their own health and welfare. Uh, and so we could put that on the next agenda, and it would be, you know, a real brief one, two meetings, there's so many bills that are out right now, and then we would come back and ask consensus, do you say, do we want to oppose these? And maybe we'll get lucky and there's a good bill we want to support, I don't know. But I think it's worth the time to look at, so if we could put that on the next agenda, please, that'd be great. And hope to see everyone at the mayor's Good Friday breakfast, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, on that, some of those legislative platform probably gives us plat, gives us wide latitude to, to oppose, and also we have a, a lobbyist who can summarize some of those for us too. Do we have, is Consulvis on, back on contract or not yet?
Not at this point, um, we don't.
We'll save that for the agenda item.
The other thing I'll add is just, Councilmember Baldy, you know, one thing that we, Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, that we get from, uh, COG and SCAG and Contract Cities, which I'm on the board of, is they all have their own legislative groups. There's been no instances where we have, um, had a differing opinion in terms of the housing bills that don't make sense with those groups, they generally tend to be unanimous in terms of their intent. So I think, um, rather than paying a lobbyist, a lot of that information comes up through Contract Cities, COG, Charter Cities, they all look at those legislative platforms and, um, recommend when we, to oppose, to monitor or to support a bill, and then we typically get those reports, you'll get those reports when you go to the board meeting. So just in the effort to save money, but I think you're right, like I heard the same thing, and I'm very concerned about the incentives to outdo each other in terms of legislation.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's going to be a, a lot of work, because there's so much effort, but I think we should have a conversation, and we should put our own letter out there saying we're opposed to X, Y, and Z.
Especially with Senator Allen, our senator, I think it's a remarkable display that those cities, presumably you can see how this logic works, they want to rebuild, they don't want to rebuild in the way Sacramento wants them to rebuild. So their way out of that is to shuffle those responsibilities on the rest of its district is a remarkable and somewhat transparent, and I'm sure I'm being somewhat slanderous, but, uh, I take it mildly personally.
His, his staff...
Considering his office is about a golf shot that way, uh, I find it remarkable.
His staff member mentioned how he had a meeting with Manhattan Beach and Santa Monica to talk about arena numbers, and so I called that staff member and said, can't wait for the meeting with El Segundo. So that meeting is scheduled, I know.
That must be the phone number that keeps calling me. I met with him yesterday in person, he didn't mention anything about his bill, so that was news to me.
Uh, he's turned out. A few things, uh, you can imagine how bright-eyed and bushy-tailed I was at a volleyball tournament at seven in the morning, surrounded by eighty-one courts of screaming people, seeing some bald guy storm over to come talk to me, but I was pleasantly surprised by he was a local police officer who was singing the praises of how professional, easy, and speedy our officers are on a felony stop. Went on at length, he was like, you guys have been great. He's like, I didn't recognize a single face there, been an officer for thirty years, didn't recognize a single face there, and they were amazing. So, uh, hats off to the chief, uh, I wish I could have quoted this guy, but because it was seven in the morning and I was surrounded by clapping fourteen-year-olds, uh, I just, you know, stared at him. Uh, but it was remarkable, and it's a tribute to the, uh, to the efforts that we have put on, on that department of law enforcement and public safety writ large. Elias, we didn't cover this today, but I think it is good news to share here in the committee, that is, that is just tremendous, that unanimous approval of all of our grant applications. I mean, that puts money directly back into our pocket from the general fund. Uh, we're fully covered for the Safe to School walks, walking programs, uh, fully covered for our striping in Smoky Hollow, uh, those are big wins. I had a meeting at Aerospace, which is a federally funded research branch, right? So it's a nonprofit, I know that, that hurts your feelings, Paul, they don't pay any taxes, uh, but they're putting a hundred million dollars' worth into their campus, right? And they are adding forty net PhDs almost every six months. So to show you the strength of our local economy when it comes to aerospace defense and innovation, uh, that is a testimony. They, you know, with much ado, moved their CEO's office to Chantilly, Virginia, to be closer to the flagpole, but at the same time, adding headcount, adding a footprint, uh, and it is a, and yes, I know, they're moving from one building to another, no, no heart palpitations, that will put, you know, there'll be people there to rent that building as well. I left that heartily encouraged that that sector of the economy, which is somewhat, um, insulated from the cycles of the rest of the broader economy, is doing so well. And lastly, I have an item for us that I want the council to take under advisement to perhaps take action at the next council meeting. With Hyperion, we see most of our complaints are about the air quality, and most of the complaints are about the orders and the smells. I also couple that with the grave concern about their unbelievable inefficiency in their billing practices. When they came here to tell us about their last billing increase, and we told them their data was wrong, they gave us this sort of like nineteen-eighties Dennis Miller smirk, like we didn't know we were talking about. And all we get from that is overcharge after overcharge after overcharge, and eighteen months later, they can crawl back and tell us they're going to credit it. Right now, the city is obligated to be their bagman. We collect bills on their behalf that we know are incorrect. So what I would like us to consider is a city is figuring out what that agreement looks like, and telling them that if they want to send our residents incorrect bills, they can do it themselves, but I do not want to collect it on their behalf.
I, I support that. Can we get that, so do you have, do some direction, is there anyone, is there anyone who is opposed to that?
Yeah, support.
If they, if they want to send people bad bills, they can get a printer and send out seven thousand bad bills, but I do not want to be a part of it any longer. And if they want to figure out a way to shut off the sewage pipe, they can get some cement poured down there.
Yes, I'm getting some nods from Public Works, so we can get that on the next agenda? Okay.
Can, can we make it even a little bit more broader than the mayor's suggesting and talk a little bit further about Hyperion? Again, since our last meeting, there's been absolutely no movement that I'm aware of in hiring a new GM, it's like they've completely disregarded or forgotten our request, which was a public request that went straight to mayor, and, um, that there's been nothing done about that.
Okay, we'll add that.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, city attorney?
Not the city, thank you.
City manager and/or deputy city manager? Oh, we've got...
Actually, if it's okay, counsel, can we have two meetings for the Hyperion item on the billing? Our Public Works Director saying he needs a little time to calculate all of that and get it back.
Yeah, I, I frankly, I don't know the nature of why we do it for them to begin with, I'm sure we just did it to make it easier in the process, but considering that they have all the responsiveness of an East German steel mill, I have no desire to continue in it. So if you need two meetings to figure it out, that's fine.
Okay, we, we do.
Because I don't need that many meetings to say we're going to stop. So, two meetings?
Yes, please.
Anything for the city manager? Before you ran him by parade? I keep losing everything else.
Speaking of Hyperion, just, um, real quick, um, we continue to, uh, AQMD continues to receive, uh, odor complaints, uh, roughly in the forty to forty-eight complaint range, which is, there were forty-eight in the past two weeks, they did issue one notice of violation on April tenth for public nuisance. Also, and I think, Mayor, you, you had brought this up at the last meeting, and our Public Works Director did confirm that the bioenergy facility generates all the electricity that Hyperion uses.
Yeah, they say they fully consume it on site.
Fully consume it, yes.
I'll stop whining about that.
Do not export any to the grid, yes. And then also, um, Hyperion did perform regular cleaning of one of their battery tanks, uh, from, uh, four eleven to four fifteen. These tanks do require regular cleaning to remove any buildup that can accumulate during solids removal process. We, I, I don't know if any of the odor complaints related to that window, but the cleaning did take place over those four days. Uh, that concludes, uh, the Hyperion report.
Very well, and with that, seven forty-four, we are adjourned.